Good evening and welcome. I call the September 18th, 2014 meeting of the Planning Commission City of Bellingham to order and ask everybody to silence all electronic devices before the meeting begins. So if you've got something that squeaks, squirs, beeps, put it on airplane mode or throw it out the window, please. Heather, would you call the rule?
Tom Gristed.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
And both Ali Taishi and Sarice Snow are excused.
Okay. We have approval of the previous minutes meetings, so I assume or hope that everybody had a chance to read the August 7th minutes. And we need to have a motion.
I move to approve the August 7th minutes.
I would second that with one correction in that Danny Neal was still listed on the roll.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Now we come to the time of the evening where we have public comment period. And that means that anybody in the public can get up and speak to us for a maximum of three minutes on any subject other than tonight's meeting. So if you're going to speak on tonight's meeting, wait till the public hearing. But if you want to talk about your grandma's cookies, or Elmo, or anything else, you get three minutes, free airtime. You don't have to identify yourself, although if you don't, nobody is going to know when you get your moments of fame on YouTube. Anybody want to speak to us on anything other than the subject of tonight's meeting? Yes?
My name is Bob Conote. I live off Samish Way. A couple weeks ago, there was an article in the paper about Bellingham becoming a bicycle-friendly, more bicycle-friendly community than it presently is. I ride a bike. I'm not that old that I can't get on it. I don't ride it as much as I'd like to. I'd like to know where any of the regulations for bicycle riders are posted. I know that they're supposed to, when they're in traffic, abide by the traffic laws. Just coming over here this evening, passing a station, a gas station, at the beginning of Holly, two young men, apparently from Weston, because that's what their shirt said, cutting across that parking lot, going across, and then going directly across Lakeway and going down on the sidewalk on the other side. I don't know, what's the regulation? I'm sure they're posted somewhere. Secondly, in May, I was at the Rite Aid drugstore. There were two police officers on bicycles there, talking. On the opposite side of the street, coming along, next to the federal building, three young men riding their bicycle. The light was green, coming across. They came right past, off the curb, across the street, back up on the curb, and kept going along the sidewalk. I went over to the police officers and I said, "What's the rule there?" And the one fellow said to me, "Well, they can ride on the sidewalk." But I said, "They went across against a red light." "Well, there's nothing we can do about that." The other gentleman seemed to think I was impringing on his quiet time with his friend. I got a dirty look. I didn't get any response from him. I guess I should have, at that point, taken his badge number, because I just didn't like his attitude. Now, I don't mind bicycles, like I say, I ride one. But I think somewhere, if they're going to try to do anything about more bicycles, or more making this a bicycle-friendly city, they should look into some things that we had in New York. In New York, if you were above the age of seven, you could not ride on sidewalks. It was the law. If you had a bicycle in New York, it had to be registered. And it had to be registered every year. I don't know what the regulations are in Bellingham, but if we're going to become an ideal bicycle-friendly city for the rest of the country to look at, I think we ought to look over what the rules are for the bicycle riders, and what we can do to make sure those that are breaking those rules, there's some way to enforce that. If I broke the rule when I lived in New York, a policeman would confiscate my bicycle. It was gone. My mother and father had to come down, and they had to sign a thing, and I had a sign sending, and I said, "If it's twice, then you're not allowed, no bicycle anymore." Just a point. I don't know where the rules are made up, but I think that if we're going to follow, as the newspaper said, "Make this a model city for bicycle riding," we ought to make sure we have the right rules in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on anything other than tonight's topic? Don't see a rush to the microphone, so we'll close the public comment period. Next on the agenda is presentation of the City IQ program. So if we can...
My name is Anne Stark, and I'm an employee here at the City of Bellingham. I'm a senior GIS analyst in the IT department. I'm here to present to you tonight about some new software that we've been developing here at the city, and hopefully its usefulness to you. Before we get started, I want to give you a little context. So I'd like to read just sort of a history about how we got to this point that will help frame the demonstration. You may not be aware of this, but the city has collected a wealth of mapping information, and this information is stored in a geographic information system, or a GIS. The City IQ application that I'm about to demonstrate is a map-based tool for providing access to GIS information for staff and the public. The application has been available to staff for several years, and to the public over the last four years. Our GIS is remarkably mature at nearly 20 years old, and allows us to be a recognized leader in the Pacific Northwest region in the field of local government GIS applications. The mapping information, called GIS layers, which are referenced in the application, have been built and maintained by city staff. These GIS layers contain valuable information and provide a way to link to other systems, such as assessors, billing, document management, and work management systems. The application functions as a tool for better decision-making and customer service throughout the city. It offers a one-stop service area to provide better efficiencies in looking up data. This tool is specifically designed to bring together systems into one accessible framework by providing the data and relevant links to business systems and related online information. City IQ runs on a software called GeoCortex. I work with Brian Small, another senior GIS analyst, to develop this version of City IQ, which replaces an existing version, which was aging in the technologic sense, and was not keeping up with advances in mobile device computing. You'll see today that City IQ works well on tablets and other mobile devices. If you have one with you, I encourage you to try along with me as we go through the So the first thing to know is how to get here. There are handouts that I brought along, if people want to follow along, and I think you all have a copy of this. The web address is cob.org/cityiq, and that will take you to this page. And I just want to highlight that if you come back to this page later and visit it, there are three places to get help. Here's the 15-minute with City IQ handout that you have today, and there are two other help guides to help you along if you explore this later. So I'm just going to click on this link. Actually, I've got it open already here. And I'm just going to go through this handout, because it's an overview of really common tools that you'll probably want to use. It doesn't even come close to showing you all the capability of City IQ, so I would encourage you to explore it further. The first and most common task probably that most people will want to do is to find an address, a place, or a name. So I'll just demonstrate by searching on the word "library." And I'm up in the upper right-hand corner. And you can see that it searched our database, and it found several libraries. I'm going to go ahead and click on the Fairhaven Library entry. And it brought up three entries: a landmark, a building named Fairhaven Library, and a historic register site. So you'll get matches to anything that matched your search query in our system. So I'm going to go ahead and click on the historic register site, and it brings up additional information over here on the left side, and it highlighted the item on the map. And I'm going to just zoom into this. So one great thing about City IQ is that it brings together lots of pieces of information into one place. So on the left-hand side, you'll see that we've provided links to information about the building that we have on the city website. It also has links to information about its status as a historical site here. So you'll see that the Fairhaven Library is right there in the middle. I'm just going to tap on that parcel, and that's going to bring up additional information about that parcel, including some information from the Assessor's Office, links directly into the Assessor's database, the Watcom County Assessor's Database. And then there's a link right here called the Land Parcel Report. And I'd like to demonstrate that, because this is the real power of this tool. In just a few seconds, it's going to tap into a bunch of databases and return an amalgamation of live data that it received from our GIS system. So here's the report. And I'm just going to run through this quickly. It has a legal description from the Watcom County Assessor's Office, and additional information, site addresses and parcel numbers. So if this was a condominium, all of the related numbers and addresses will be listed. It has information about what neighborhood, what zone, and what historical information or zones it might be in, along with what watershed. And if you're in the Lake Watcom watershed, if the parcel's in the Lake Watcom watershed, you get additional information about living in that watershed with a link to a website. It provides the school districts that that parcel is located in, some latecomer utility information, subdivisions, current and historical, utility billing account information, ward and precinct voter information with links to representatives' websites. And then, to align with our city legacy goals, we have a list of parks within one-half mile, trails within one-half mile, and bus stops within one-half mile. So with a click of a button, you've accessed a wealth of information that would take a while to collect otherwise. Are there any questions so far? Okay. I'll continue on. So that was what you could do with a click of a button right on the map. I'd like to bring your attention to this big blue "I want to" button. And what this does is it provides easy access to some of the more common tools that you may want to do. For example, if you want to change what layers are showing on the map, clicking on that choice will bring you over here to a table of contents, and that shows you the wealth of GIS information that we have on the map available to us. So just looking in the planning information section here, you can see we have a lot of city districts, historic places, voter precincts, neighborhood, and zoning layers, for example. So you can turn those on and off at whatever combination suits your need. Back to the "I want to" button up here at the top. You can also print a map. So this can be a custom map, and it will print whatever layers you have turned on, whatever markup that you might have. There are markup tools included with this. I won't demo that right now, but I do have a link to what is generated. So this is an example of a print I did of the Watcom County Senior Center area, right here. And it provides you with the opportunity to change the title and to add your own notes as well. And again, you can do that for any area with any layers that you desire turned on. You can also set the scale, so you can zoom in and out as you need on your map. You saw me demo running a parcel report. That's the next item down. You can also buffer a parcel and print mailing labels in the event that you need to notify neighbors for some purpose. There are some limits to this tool that prevent you from printing mailing labels for the entire city. So you are limited to a maximum number of labels that you can print. You can also print a monument report, and that refers to a survey monument, if you have any folks that are interested in that. Here's an example of the report as it comes out. Let me just zoom in. So this report tells you about the monument, the last time it was found, where it's located, some site pictures of that, more detailed information about the control, any additional photos or documents that we have. And then if we have notebooks that are scanned related to that monument, those are included as pages as well in this document. So that can be a really helpful tool to the surveying community. So the last tool I want to show you is the "Show More Tools" button, right here. And if you click on that, it pops open another additional set of tools here that include quick ways to turn on and off groups of layers. If you're interested in, for example, all the sewer layers or all the planning districts, with one click, you can turn on all of those. These are similar tools to what I've been using with just my mouse, and what you could use with your finger on a mobile device, just panning and zooming. We have measuring tools, so you can fairly quickly estimate a distance. And I would like to remind you that it is really an approximation. It's dependent on the scale, the resolution of your screen, and how carefully you click, and how far zoomed in you are to the map. So just remember that it's an approximation. So I'm going to double-click to finish, and you can see that it labeled each segment of the line, and it gave me a total. If I later decide that I actually wanted that in miles, I can switch that information on the fly. So that can be a helpful tool for approximating distances. And then I'm clearing that. You also have the ability, which I mentioned earlier, to mark up the map. So let's say that I specifically want to draw attention to the Fairhaven Library, but I missed it. Let's try again. There we go. And then I can also say, "Look at this property" as well. You can erase those, edit those. You can also add text. And then again, if you print the map, those will show up on there. So the last thing I'd like to show you is alternative base maps. So if you look over here in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that there's a Base Maps button. And this provides a quick way to access, for example, aerial photos. So here's a 2013 photo. Let me just turn off the buildings and parcel lines. We also have a 2010 photo. And then we also have terrain, which is generated from our LiDAR, our high-resolution LiDAR flight. So this is very highly accurate depiction of the landform. A couple interesting things to note. We get information from other map providers. For example, we have the entire USGS topo map collection online, and this covers the entire United States, not just the Bellingham area. So if there are any hikers out there, that can be a useful tool. And we also have the World Ocean Layer, which I personally think is just fascinating to look at, and shows the underwater landforms, something that few of us ever get to see. But returning back to Bellingham. That is pretty much my tour. Like I said, I have only briefly touched on the tools. There's a wealth of information in there. We have had this available to the public for approximately a month. If you test it out and you have ideas or comments for us, we would love to hear back from you. And the email address to provide those comments is cityiq@cob.org. And we will get that email. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
I've used this a little bit. And a couple times, when I called it up onto that first page, or whatever you call it, and hit the link, it would come, and you'd get the title bar, and nothing.
Yeah.
So I'd close it, go back, hit the link again, and then it springs to life.
Yep. And what's happening behind the scenes is that your browser, your web browser, is downloading the components that it needs to run it. And if you were to just be patient and wait, it would accumulate all the pieces, and it would come up. But since you closed it and restarted it, it has all those pieces already downloaded, and it's ready to run. So either one works. You can close it and reload it, or just wait.
Firefox usually isn't so slow.
It's really not about the browser so much as it is about your connection, or just if you've cleared your cache and the pieces its needs aren't available, so... Yeah?
Yeah, Anne, I had mentioned this before. I think this is a great tool. One addition I would like to see is some traffic counts, a layer of traffic counts on this. I think that'd be really beneficial to the commission to have that as we look at different properties.
Yes. I made note of your comment earlier, so we'll be investigating that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have a counter, so you know how many people have access to the website?
We will. It's not in place yet.
Do you have an idea, a rough idea, of what it's cost to put this together, money-wise? What we're seeing here tonight?
I would not be able to accurately estimate that, no. Sorry.
I assume that to get a counter, you'll be able to determine whether that, all the money that is spent, and the people that are involved in doing this, whether that is cost-effective, right?
True. Yes.
When would you have that kind of information?
I would suggest that you comment to us in an email, and that will generate the Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anne. Okay. Next up is the public hearing, which is consideration of a request to docket a proposal, including amendments to the Samish Neighborhood Plan Area 4 to rezone about 1 and 3/4 acres at 801 Samish Way, from residential single to commercial plan with non-retail restriction. And Lisa Poole is going to deliver us from evil... Er, no. She's going to give us the stuff.
Wait a minute. Good evening. I'm Lisa Poole with the Planning Department. And as you stated, this is a docket proposal for 801 Samish Way. A few slides for you. Under the rules of the Growth Management Act, the comprehensive plan, which includes neighborhood plans, can be amended only once a year. The first step in the process is to review the amendment requests and decide which, if any, should be added to the 2014-2015 docket. Council will formally establish the list. So the docketing process does not answer the question of whether proposed amendment or rezone should be approved, but rather whether the proposal should be added to this list that will be reviewed through a separate process. That's an important distinction. Just wanted to highlight the review criteria for the docketing process. All of the proposals must meet Criterion A, as well as one or more of the criteria under I won't go through each one, but they are in the staff report. So the request is to amend the Samish Neighborhood Plan Area 4 to rezone approximately 1.75 acres from residential single to commercial planned with a non-retail restriction. And that means that no retail uses would be allowed. This application was submitted by Pacific Harbor Holdings LLC with the property owner's consent. If approved, applications for a comprehensive plan amendment, as well as a rezone, to make the change, would be submitted. The rezone is intended to facilitate the relocation of a psychology practice to the site, and the site includes an existing church, which is permitted through a conditional use permit. During the July 21 City Council public hearing on two other docket requests, Pacific Harbor Holdings made a request to the council to add this proposal to the list of docket... the docket, excuse me, and council directed the applicants later at a committee session to go through the docketing process and submit an application. And they did submit a formal application on August 8. The applicants held a required neighborhood meeting on September 11, and the comments... there were several positive comments and several comments in opposition, but in general, folks were supportive of the psychology practice locating on the site, but they were concerned about opening up the uses on the site to include commercial uses. Staff finds that the application meets the docketing criteria, including the availability of staff resources to review the proposal and serving the public interest by evaluating whether the existing zoning is still appropriate for the site. So we are recommending that... you make a recommendation to council to add it to the 2014-2015 docket. And I believe the applicants are here, and they also have a presentation, so we can bring that up. There you go.
Lisa, Steve has a question for you.
On page 5 of the packet, there's a summary of comments from the meeting that this meeting... do you have a summary of the comments?
Yes, I just gave you a verbal summary.
Like?
Some more. Well, I mean, that was really the general sentiment, was that folks liked the fact that the psychology group was going to locate on the site, because as you'll see, they are not planning to make any major changes to the site. They will go into the building as is. Like I said, the major concern was opening up the list of uses to include commercial uses, but they are planning to restrict that, to exclude the non-retail.
Well, good evening. My name is Rodney Anderson, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Pacific Harbor Holdings and Pacific Harbor Psychology. I'm not a member of the group. I am the husband of one of the members of that group. I also happen to be a family physician here in Bellingham, where I've lived and worked for the last five years. I'm going to attempt to keep my comments relatively brief tonight, and I thought Lisa and the city did a great job in the packet outlining how they felt that this met docketing criteria, so I'm not going to waste your time reiterating that. But I do want to expand on one specific section of the docketing criteria and give a slightly different perspective on that, and that's docketing criteria 2. The proposal demonstrates strong potential to serve the public interest by implementing specifically identified goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. In the staff report, the response to that is that the comprehensive plan includes several goals and policies supporting the docket proposal, including those related to economic vitality, small businesses, and neighborhood character retention. I would like to add one fourth broad category that I think this specific proposal meets as it pertains to the comprehensive plan, and that's the category of healthcare. And I just want to pull out a couple things within the comprehensive plan that specifically reference healthcare, and our thoughts on how this proposal relates to those. So in Chapter 1 of the comprehensive plan, there's the statement, "Visions for Bellingham, Goal Number 42, that residents benefit from access to quality healthcare." As a family physician in this community, I feel well-equipped to speak to this. As a family physician in this community, I feel well-equipped to speak to this, and I think by and large, this community does a phenomenally good job on the healthcare front. I think we have a good hospital, I think we have good primary care, and I think by and large, we have good specialty care as well. And generally, we have good ancillary services surrounding those, and there's good dental access and such. But there's one area of care in this community where we, I feel like we repeatedly fail. I fail my patients, and we fail our residents, and that's in access to mental health services and psychology services. And I have made this statement before, but it bears repeating. As a family physician, if you need to see an orthopedic surgeon or cardiologist, I can get you in in a day or two. If you need to see a physical therapist, it takes a week. Heaven forbid you should need to see a psychologist, we're looking in two months, if not longer than that. And given that most of those referrals that I make come at a time of pretty desperate need for those patients, I never feel like that's acceptable. And so this community has suffered from a fragmented and just a complete lack of access to these services, and that's been particularly exacerbated recently, within the last month, when one of the large mental health groups disbanded in this community, which has created greater fragmentation and more difficulty accessing services. And when I think about who is most affected by this, I think about all the clients, my patients, who access these services and who depend on these services. And it's a bit unfortunate that due to the confidential nature of the mental health services, that those people can't be here. They can't speak, can't write letters, they can't sign petitions, they can't lend their name to this cause. And when I think about that group, I've sort of thought of them as the missing voice in this whole conversation, because we've heard from the city, the staff, we've heard from the group, we've had multiple meetings with the neighbors and have appreciated the input from them, but we haven't once heard from any of the people who actually rely and depend on these services, so I feel need to give voice to those. So in lieu of asking those clients to speak, I actually reached out to some of my colleagues, other family physicians who practice in Bellingham, and asked if they could endorse this statement. "As a family physician practicing in Bellingham, I can attest to the ongoing need for stable, reliable, easily accessible psychology and mental health services. Taking steps to ensure continued access to such services would be a great benefit to my patients." And as of this meeting, I've had 12 physicians who collectively care for about 20,000 patients in this community, who've given me their permission to use their names in support of this statement. I didn't include their names, but if anybody wants them, I have them. I wanna return to the comprehensive plan and talk, or highlight one section in Chapter 10, Economic Development. There's a section that states, "According to the 2009 Employment Lands Study Phase 2, a number of employment sectors were identified as desirable for Bellingham based on their potential for growth, wage and salary increases, and the presence or concentration in the city or region." So there were nine specific sectors that were identified, one of which was healthcare. And this section of the comprehensive plan goes on further to say, "Goal Number 26, ensure that there are suitable locations for these targeted employment sectors." And I wanted to describe just for a minute what a suitable location for mental health services looks like, because I think it's unique, and I think it's relevant to this proposal. The first is the specific location, that having a location that's peaceful, that's serene, that's sensitive to these fragile clients who are coming and accessing these services would be ideal. To have a location for a large practice that fills a geographic void would also be important. And I've outlined previously how the mental health services are largely concentrated in several areas of the city, but there are no group practices in the Seehome Village and Samish Neighborhood area. Next is easy access via private vehicle, and as you guys could see on the map, 801 Samish Way is very close to I-5, which is convenient, and then access via public transportation, and it's right along one of the bus lines that goes straight from the downtown Bellingham depot. Second is parking, and this is a surprisingly large issue. This is probably the major issue why this group has desired to move from their current location to Bellwether, where parking has become an increasingly difficult problem. So the spaces need to be close to the building. Many of the clients they serve have a multitude of medical issues, can't walk distances, some of them are wheelchairs and use walkers. And ideally, the spaces would be reserved for clients, that is, they would be owned by the practice. And this practice probably needs 25, 20, 25 spaces. And so they've looked at buildings downtown and in Fairhaven and such, but there is no office building in downtown Bellingham that will allow that number of reserved spaces specifically. And then the final piece is the building itself really needs to be ADA-accessible, with ramps, elevators, hallways, and bathrooms, and then obviously enough offices to fit this entire group. And so they spent several months searching for properties, and this is the property that emerged in town that really met this list, and it's really the only one that they found up to this point. So that's a big part of their desire to move into this location, it really does fit this, fit this need list. I wanna shift gears for a second and talk about reaching out to the neighbors. Lisa mentioned the neighborhood meeting held last week. There were two other smaller neighborhood meetings that had been held over the course of the prior month, and numerous individual conversations with specific neighbors. And I think Lisa did a good job of summarizing those. For me, there were two specific concerns that emerged, and I wanted to just expand upon those. The first was the desire to preserve the status quo. We heard comments like, "We love this piece of property, we love the trees, we love the open space, we love the greenery, we don't wanna see houses crammed in there, we like the way it looks now, and we love the architecture of the building." And I would simply point out that the same things that the neighbors like about the property is what the folks at Pacific Harbor Psychology like about the property. They're gonna move there and not touch it. They like that serenity, and they are fully committed to keeping the external appearance of the building and the landscaping as-is. The second thing is the long-term risk of the zoning change, and I would highlight two comments, and I think the group at Pacific Harbor Psychology has tried very intently to work with the neighbors and do their part to alleviate some of these concerns. I would point out first that the group is actively taking steps to ensure that this is a long-term home for their practice. The folks who are buying into the building all have a 15- to 30-year time window where they will continue to practice. They have created their LLC such that the moment that you retire from the practice, you will sell your share of the building, and that will keep ownership of the building within the practice in that location, which theoretically still could move, but it's increasingly difficult to do that. So they've tried to take the steps to ensure that this will be a permanent home for their practice. And then secondly, and Lisa outlined this, that the group is proposing a more limited zoning, and this is really done out of respect for the neighbors and the desire to limit the long-term risk that might exist. Obviously, the zoning needs to allow them to move their practice there, but the non-retail designation is wonderful, and there's no, they're not developers, they're not investors, there are no plans to turn this around, there's simply a plan to establish this as a long-term home. So whatever zoning allows that to happen, they would be in support of. So I think their hope is that at the end, this is beneficial to our parties, that it could be good for the city residents by improving access to greatly needed mental health services, could be good for the neighborhood by maintaining the property and also protecting the long-term interests of the neighbors, and finally, could be good for the practice Pacific Harbor Psychology by providing a permanent home for this well-respected local business so that they can continue to serve the needs of Bellingham city residents. So I think our hope in the end is that this really can be a win-win-win across the board, and I think we're actively working with all invested parties to try to make that happen. So thanks for your time. This is another picture of the building. So there's one other member from Pacific Harbor Psychology who is hoping to come up and speak briefly. Do you want me to shut this down? I don't know how to turn this off, Lisa. Oh, okay.
Good evening, and thank you. And thank you commissioners and staff, and all of the neighbors that have come, and my colleagues. I am Kate Haskell, and I'm a licensed mental health therapist. I'm also a nationally certified therapist, a child mental health specialist. I've been working in psychology for 26 years, and I've been in private practice for 19. In addition to my clinical work, I do a lot of consultation with Bellingham schools and volunteering with them. I am here as the representative of my nine colleagues. To clarify our intentions and our role in the community, eight of the nine of us have lived and worked in the city of Bellingham for over a decade, some of us for several decades. We have strong ties to this community and are committed to the betterment of this city. Some of us were born here, and most of us have children who attend the local schools. In July of 2003, we opened our offices at Pacific Harbor Psychology, and our organization has maintained our location there for 11 years through four landlords. We take care of our clients, who range in age, from childhood to the elderly, supporting them through a wide range of difficult circumstances. We also provide individual counseling, family counseling, diagnostic evaluations for a number of disorders, and we treat students from Western Washington University, which makes this location particularly more accessible for those students. We do not treat sex offenders, or court-ordered patients, or the chronically mentally ill population that is served via other practices or social service agencies, which is a concern that has been raised briefly. Our primary work is traditional outpatient psychology, and our practice is quiet. We typically see about 35 patients a day total, and we rarely work evenings and weekends. We are rarely in the office, all nine of us, at the same time. That usually happens once a month for two hours, otherwise we're in and out. Prior to locating the property in 801 Samish Way, we'd been unable to identify any other properties within the city limits that met our essential requirements. We briefly discussed moving out of the city and felt that we wanted to maintain our offices in Bellingham city limits for ourselves and our clients. As many of you are aware, and from Dr. Anderson's presentation, shortage of mental health services is significant. We've carefully considered the impacts that our office might have on the immediate neighbors or the greater Samish neighborhood. We plan to remodel the interior of the existing church building, but do not plan to make extensive changes to the exterior or the landscaping. Additionally, we've heard the concerns of the Samish Way neighbors in several neighborhood meetings, including our one required pre-docketing on 9/11. Consistently, we have heard from the neighbors that they are supportive of maintaining the current appearance of this property, and are supportive of us as a profession and as a professional group. However, some neighbors are reluctant to trust our intent to occupy this property as our permanent home. They fear we may want to flip this property, relocate elsewhere, or face business problems. These would be understandable concerns if we were investors or developers from outside the area or newly-developed business owners. However, we are psychologists and counselors who live in this community. We are not investors or developers, and we have been together for 11 years. We have invested in this community and care deeply about the impacts on this neighborhood. Some of us have worked together for over 15 years. I'd like all of you to think you have worked with someone, or nine people, for 15 years. In the essence, we're asking our future neighbors to trust us when we tell them we intend to occupy the property in perpetuity. In our work as psychology practitioners, we're primarily asked to make predictions about future behavior. So what is the best predictor of future behavior? Research consistently tells us the best predictor of future behavior is past and present behavior. Let's look at the facts. Most of us have been together for over 15 years. We've only occupied two locations during that time. We left our first location because we wanted to form this smaller group from the larger group that many of us were in. Since that time, we've been at our present location, Bellwether Way, for 11 years, and again are leaving this location because we have to. Additionally, in our 11 years together as a group, we have faced and overcome many challenges, from the healthcare system changing, reimbursements changing, and to more personal difficulties, the illness and death of one of our founding group members. Our group has proven in the last 11 years that we are stable and capable of overcoming challenges. Our history certainly supports that our stated intent of occupying this property for many years to come should allay any concerns that we wish to profit or cash in on the proposed rezone, or that our group is likely to crumble. As a group with a long, stable history, we view the property at 801 Samish as a place to establish a home for our office for decades. I wanted to share a picture of who we are. All of us face challenges. We play a crucial role of support in this community. We treat people just like you, whether it's your kid, or your teenager, or your parent, or your partner. We want to have a location that you can come easily to and receive the care you need. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Does any of the commissioners have questions of the proponent? Oh, okay.
And she may have something to add that I am not qualified to speak to, because I'm not a lawyer.
I'm gonna be really brief. I actually wasn't planning to speak tonight, but there's just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, and as you know, lawyers can't pass up a chance to talk. So I just wanted to focus again, I think, on the docketing criteria a little bit. Both Lisa Poole and Dr. Anderson went through that with you, and that's what the substance of tonight's hearing is about. As you know, it's a little bit unusual that we're here tonight, and Lisa Poole had mentioned that the council actually considered whether to docket this request after the normal April 1 deadline, and they specifically allowed this group to apply now and bring the request to them, so council can consider whether the proposal meets the docketing criteria. I also wanted to just preserve our right to respond to any of the comments made from the public at the end, if there are things that our group here can help answer, clarify, and wanted to ask the chair if that would be acceptable.
That's our usual procedure, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all. And of course, if you have any question, legal questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Well, not a legal question, but you didn't state your name.
Oh, sorry. Simi Jane Zender Thurston, P.S.
Thank you. Now, does any of the commissioners have any questions for the proponents before we go forward? Jeff? Or staff, yeah, excuse me.
Well, I do have a question, just to sort of enlighten me on history, but I guess you can decide whether you wanna answer this now before the public hearing, or whether it's more appropriate to do it during deliberations. But I was a little bit curious about what the procedure has been in the past, say, with other properties that are in primarily single-family zoning, that are institutional uses, that are kind of in a transition, just kind of non-retail, and an example would be Spy up on South Hill, or Catholic Community Services by Joe's Gardens. There are precedents for trying to deal with this sort of thing, and I don't know what they are. And I'd be kind of interested in getting education on how you view this sort of use in a residential zone, and how you've done that in the past. But you can choose when you wanna answer that, but I am kind of curious about that.
Well, let us think about it, but I don't know the history of either of those two examples that you raised. I can tell you that those two examples and the other ones that I know of have fit well into neighborhoods and haven't raised issues that we've had to deal with that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the staff, why are you not considering a conditional use permit vis a rezone?
We would really like to be able to do this through a conditional use, but medical offices are not allowed as conditional uses in residential zones. That was our first go-to, but they're not allowed. Churches are allowed, and that's how the church got there. Churches are allowed through a conditional use, but medical offices are not. The only way to allow this use is to change the zoning.
Thank you.
Other questions? No? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Two people have signed up to speak, Steve Abel and Ken Choville. So if Steve makes his way down, and Ken, you're in the on-deck circle.
Good evening. Heather, I'm Steve Abel, 1021 34th Street in the Samish Neighborhood. I'm a member of the Samish Board of Directors, but I'm here speaking for myself tonight. I'm not opposed to docketing this proposal, but I would like to comment on some items mentioned in the staff report and in the applicant's statement concerning the ways in which the proposal meets the required docketing criteria. I attended the September 11th neighborhood meeting, and my comments tonight echo many of the comments made by my neighbors who attended that meeting. The staff report states that the proposal meets criteria B1 and B2 by supporting comp plan goals for economic vitality, small businesses, and neighborhood character retention. All three of those goals are worthy, and in my opinion, the specific land use proposed by Pacific Harbor Psychology meets all three goals. However, because zoning amendments have the power to make permanent changes in permitted land uses and thereby pose unpredictable future threats to neighborhood character, careful formulating of the non-retail restriction will be a critically important part of the amendment. I'm not aware of any standard definition of non-retail in the zoning code. I think what that means is that you, together with the city council, can specify what that will mean for this proposal. I implore you not to sacrifice neighborhood character in your pursuit of economic vitality and small business support. The Church of Christ has been an accepted part of neighborhood character for over 20 years. I was very pleased to hear that the Pacific Harbor Psychology plans I was very pleased to hear that the Pacific Harbor Psychology plans will make minimal changes to the church's exterior appearance and its property, but the next owner, whoever that may be, and whenever the property may change hands, may have a different plan. The non-retail specification you and the council put in place may be, may turn out to be the only protection Samish neighborhood will have to maintain its character if it comes under assault by a new owner. I don't know if any of you live in Samish, but even if you don't, imagine yourself in a single-family residential neighborhood living next door to this church. As you formulate the permissible site-specific, non-retail uses for the church property, please don't include anything you would not want next door to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next is Ken.
Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity. I'm Ken Chovell. I live at 816 36th Street. Listening to Steve, I have very little to add to what he said or to what some of the other proponents of this project have said. When he asked you to consider what a neighbor of this property might have to live with in terms of your decision, he could have been talking about me. I live directly behind this church. And in fact, if you can think back to the picture that was shown, we are directly behind it, and you'd be able to see our home from kind of underneath the covered parking area there. So we have a big stake in the future of this piece of property. The church has been an outstanding neighbor for like the time that we've lived in our neighborhood. And we've lived there, my wife and I and our kids have lived there for about 12 years, almost 13 years now. But some of the neighbors along 36th Street, and I'll just speak to the immediate neighbors, the ones that I've spoken to about this project, about eight homes along 36th Street, all of whom are unanimous in their desire to see this project docketed and move forward. The church has been there for 25 years, longer than some of us, but not as long as others of us. As we have talked about this project at the neighborhood meetings, I've met a lot of neighbors or a lot of people from the neighborhood who normally I wouldn't have met. Maybe they don't live next to me, or they don't live two doors down. What I've learned is that we're all very proud of this neighborhood. We're all very interested in the future. I can't think of a better project than the one that's been proposed here in maintaining the character of this neighborhood, in providing for the needs of a very important part of the community. It is a win-win-win as we see it. So this doesn't speak to all the questions that are likely to come up during docketing, but there's an urgency here to see this move forward. And the urgency, as it's been described, is due to the fact that we have a small business group who needs to move forward and who has a plan for this property that is in keeping with maintaining the quality and the character of this neighborhood in perpetuity. Now, if there are any holes in this, I do believe that they will come out in the discussions that are here to come, once this project is docketed. But if this is not allowed to move forward, I do worry about the potential for another buyer, another project maybe coming in that perhaps would fit within the current zoning criteria but would drastically change the character of the neighborhood. So to preserve the current character, to serve the community, I urge you to allow the docketing to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Those were the two who signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Please come forward, state your name. You get about three minutes, and try not to repeat what other people have said.
Good evening. My name is Dick Conneboy. I live at 165 South 46th Street in the Samish neighborhood. Like Steve Abel, I'm on the Samish board, but I'm speaking for myself this evening. Nothing is forever. Squabbles arise within businesses. Businesses fail for economic reasons. There's no guarantee that this outfit that wants to buy this property is going to be there in perpetuity. That's just nonsense. Secondly, these folks love this property because of the area around it. And let's talk about the area around it. Basically, single-family zoned, except for the parcel, a couple parcels across the street, which you've already, I think, considered because they want to change the current zoning of commercial plan, non-retail, to commercial planned period. And what this is going to do is set up a dynamic where you can have an apartment building there in conjunction with retail. The pastor of this church that wants to sell this property to this psychology group came to one of the meetings on the rezone of the property across the street from the church because he was concerned about what that rezone would do to the quiet neighborhood in which his church was located. So the very fact that we're having these rezones on these two properties is going to set up a dynamic in which the properties on either side of the property across the street from this 801 Samish, the Community Baptist Church there, which is not a thriving community, all of a sudden, that property is going to be much more interesting to investors, purchasers. The same thing with the Elk's Lodge. So if you want to set up a dynamic in which the entire character of that end of Samish is changed and is totally out of the character of the neighborhood, then I think it would be a good idea to go along with this docketing. If you want to avoid that dynamic, I think we need to take another look at this because it's going to set up something that we don't want at that end of Samish, which is essentially a commercial end. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else wish to speak to the commission? Nobody else coming forward? We'll close the public portion. And now, staff response to anything you've heard?
Nope.
Simi, do you have any response for?
Simi Jane, again, for the applicants tonight. Just a couple of things. The concerns that I'm hearing from the public tonight, I think, are valid concerns, but they're more appropriate for this by the consider, once a rezone application is actually pending before you. That's kind of the time where the city can look at the entire application and determine whether there's any conditions that should be imposed on the city's decision on the rezone. During the docketing process, as you know, it's not the right time to place conditions at this time. The only other thing I wanted to add is that in the council packet, you'll see, I think it's on page 19, it's on page 19 of the electronic version I got, there's a Samish neighborhood land use map that staff provided for you. And you'll see that the subject property is highlighted in what looks to me as a pink color, and it's right next to Area 8, and across the street is the existing Area 9. That Area 8 is a multifamily development property there. And so while there is a lot of single-family residential property in the vicinity, I just wanted to point out that there, you know, besides the Elk Lodge and the Baptist Church across the street, there's also some high-density residential right next to the existing church property, which is at issue tonight. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you.
Actually, one more thing. Commissioner Brown, to follow up on your question of staff about institutional uses, whether that fits in with residential zones, the commercial planned zone itself allows for offices, and so that's the use that would be, that the psychology group would fit into.
Jeff, you want to restate your question again, or?
I don't know if there was an inclination to explore that further from Greg. If I understood your response, you didn't have that information. If wishes were fishes.
Well, we can certainly provide that to you when we come back for the hearing on the merits of the rezone if this gets docketed.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to say, is if it's docketed, that would be a very interesting conversation, but that wouldn't be until next year, so.
Well, an old man's memory says that SPIE used to be a nursing home a long time ago. And then, oh, gosh, it was maybe in the early 80s or late 70s, the nursing home gave up and SPIE bought the property and managed to get approval. I don't remember Catholic Community Services down by Joe's Garden. I'm just an old guy. Okay, any questions, concerns from the commission? Garrett?
I have a question for Greg. You mentioned the conditional use, that medical facilities aren't one of the uses, approved uses, under the conditional use. What mechanism would there be to, if that was to be changed within the conditional use code?
Well, you, changing the code to allow medical offices as a conditional use in a residential zone would change that for all residential zones.
Sure, sure. I'm just curious, what?
Well, that would be a text?
A comp plan amendment, or?
A text amendment to the zoning code?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, concerns?
I just want to say that I think that what we're here to do is, I'm feeling that people want to docket this, and we're not judging the merits at all at this time. So I think we need to make sure we stay out of those weeds.
No? Well, then, I guess we should ask for a motion.
I move to approve the docketing request for the amendments to the Samish neighborhood plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the docketing of this proposal to city council. Any other call for a question? Yes?
In looking at the property and also a map of how we're carving out this zone in the middle of a residential, single-family area, I've heard so many times that we don't want spot zoning in this city. We don't want to tend that way. We've got over, what, 300 of them or so. That's the one thing that really bothers me about the way we're carving out this 1.75 acres into a zoning, a commercial plan zoning area. However, I do have those questions about it, and I agree with Mr. Conneboy on several of his points about never and always, and I think we should be aware of that. But that's not the question here before us tonight. I do believe there are enough checkpoints here that they have qualified for docking, so I'm going to, tonight, support the docking of this amendment.
Any other comments? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this for docketing with the city council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go on. Okay, members of the public, you're free to leave unless you want to stick around and hear the last little bit of the meeting. Thank you for your participation. Next on the agenda is director's report. Mr. Akut.
I have a couple of things for you tonight. First up, with respect to finding a new planning director, we have gone through an extensive process to date, and we've narrowed the candidates down to a final, the final four, as a matter of fact. And they will be coming to town the first week in October, and there are a number of events that are planned that you all can participate in. Come out, meet the candidates, talk to them, get a feel for them, and then provide feedback to the mayor. So we would encourage you to do that. I think those events are on October 2nd and October 3rd. And I believe that Commissioner Taishi is actually going to participate in one of the exercises that these folks are going to be put through. There are a number of things that they'll be doing. They will be meeting and greeting people in the community. They will be going on tours. They will be put through some exercises. We have all kinds of fun stuff planned for them, so I would encourage you to participate as you can. I can't tell you anything about them other than that three of them are from Washington and one of them is from out of state. Beyond that, I don't believe their names have been announced, so I can't tell you any more than that. There are some, they are very strong candidates, I can tell you that. They all did very well in the process to this point and seem like very strong candidates, so we are very encouraged and looking forward to meeting them in person. Secondly, we are going to be updating, as you may or may not remember, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and also the subdivision ordinance. And we're going to be doing those two things fairly simultaneously, beginning this fall and probably continuing into the spring. Sorry, Jeff. And we would like to have a group of you participate in the process to develop those changes or review those ordinances, a subcommittee, if you will. The ADU ordinance will include, the ADU ordinance update will include looking at both the existing provisions in the ordinance that we have now, also whether or not it should be changed, whether or not additional housing forms should be allowed, like detached accessory dwelling units, carriage houses, and perhaps others. So, and then the subdivision ordinance will look at our current regulations and also other things that we might be able to add to that, provide additional flexibility in lot sizes and so forth. So that's the long way of saying both of these things will involve infill, if you will. And so we're looking for a group of you, three probably, to form a committee that would be willing to spend some additional time outside of your regular meeting time to work with us on these two projects. You don't have to give me names tonight if you want to think about it. It's not clear to me at this point, it's not exactly clear to me what the time commitment's going to be, but it will likely be some additional meetings, just sitting around a table talking about these things this fall. And then, in the spring, the actual ordinances would come to you for formal review and then on to the city council. So it would probably mean some additional meetings this fall. I don't have a good sense yet of how many additional meetings. That sort of depends on, once we get into it, how extensive the changes that we would be proposing might be.
Hey, Greg, I got a question on that. The additional dwelling unit ordinance? The additional dwelling unit ordinance, there's some components of additional dwelling in the infill toolkit. So, you know, carriage house, or cottage house, or I think carriage house is the one. If there was an amendment made to the ADU ordinance, does that, would that carry over to, say, the carriage houses and the infill toolkit?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but I think the thought would be if we're going to suggest that carriage houses should be allowed, and a carriage house, as you know, is usually a separate dwelling unit over a garage or over a detached building. If we think that those should be allowed, that we would pull that from the toolkit and put it into the ADU ordinance, and perhaps other forms as well, so.
But through that process, there could be some interchange between those two?
Yes. Yes. That's the short answer, yes.
Maybe as that kind of comes, you know, as the work schedule and the time commitments become a little more clear, you can send some emails out and just kind of gauge interest?
Yeah, just think about it. You would have to, you would have to spend some additional time working on this stuff. And we would really appreciate that. Our hope is, you know, that so that you can help, when this comes forward, both the public and your fellow commissioners understand sort of how we got to where we are, why we're proposing, what we're proposing, and give you that background that you normally don't get. You get that, you get a more or less finished product from staff. In these two instances, we want you to help us prepare that product. So think about it, and we'll be in contact with you.
Yeah, I had a question just for information on this conditional use issue, where medical uses are not permitted. Do you know the history or the context of that, you know, why that is? I mean, do you know the intent of that exclusion?
The list of conditional uses in residential single zones is fairly short.
It is. You get churches, and schools.
That's about it.
So it was tailored to be pretty specific to more innocuous type?
Right. Conditional use is a little bit of a misnomer, because if a use is a conditional, that means it's allowed if it meets the three or four criteria, or the five or six criteria that are in the code.
Yeah.
So you have to be careful about saying that's allowed, because if you say that's allowed, it's allowed.
Right, right. There's no restrictions on it at that point. I mean, that's just.
Right, if you meet the criteria, you go to the hearing examiner. There's not a, you don't get to decide on it. The council doesn't get to decide on it.
Right, right.
It goes to the hearing examiner. If a proposal meets the criteria that are in the code, the permit is issued.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's a circumstance where we're very careful with what conditional uses are allowed in residential single zones.
Right, right, right.
Well, I'll ask a question that might be of interest to fellow commission members, and that is that the commission terms are typically four-year appointments. I, of course, got on the commission because I wanted to work on this, and I've been waiting every year, and it's been delayed. I would be interested in working on it, if that meant being a commission member through next year, but not another four years. So I don't want to be sneaky and say, oh, yeah, I've, you know, re-upped for another four years and then just resign. How important is it that, I guess, in terms of different commission seats, that the four years are staggered? What happens, and is it possible for somebody to re-up for a year?
Commission appointments are made by the mayor, and she can do pretty much whatever she wants in that regard. It would be up to her. If you stay another year, you will be taking a seat that will be leaving right in the middle of the comp plan update, something to think about. I would love to have you be able to work on this, and I know it's an interest of yours. If you want to talk to the mayor and say, this is what I would like you to consider, you can do that. And if she agrees, then that's what we'll do. She has full authority to reappoint, and she could do that with the knowledge that you only want to stay another year.
Well, then I have another question, which still is apropos here. And that is that I haven't seen a subcommittee in the time that I've been on here that's operated like this. If you set up a subcommittee process like you intend, would there be other stakeholders or ex officio members that would be involved in the subcommittee deliberations? I don't care if I have a vote or not. I'm just kind of curious about what, how you're envisioning that committee working, whether it's three people sitting down over a beer or a, probably not, but hashing out the details, and coming up and kicking around some proposals, or whether it's more of a formal process that does not include stakeholders or does not include ex officio?
There are other stakeholder groups that will be participating in both of these processes. I think we had a meeting of one today, or yesterday. I don't know, it's been a long week. So there are other folks that are participating as technical advisors. I don't believe your bylaws provide for ex officio members. You can come as an interested citizen and say your piece. Something you've.
That would be annoying to people, I think. I will take it up with Mayor Linville.
What are we doing as far as meeting next month? Are we on for the 2nd, and was it the 18th?
We're definitely not, we're definitely not on for the 2nd. I don't want you to think that you get the whole month off at this point. We may have a meeting on the 16th. I don't know. The 2nd is definitely out, because we'll be doing planning director activities, and there's nothing scheduled, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nothing for the good of the order? Well, then we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.